We're going to call this meeting to order and Tom, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'll be honored. Thank you. Our point of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ask the clerk to call roles, please.
Commissioner District One Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three Sharon Trask.
I'm here. Thank you. Now we move on to item number four. Do we have correspondence?
This week I have no correspondence to report.
Great. Move on to item 4.2, news release, and ask staff to come forward.
The Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board began in August of 2018 with the purpose of strategically aligning housing homelessness, mental health, and chemical dependency grant boards to improve the health of Mason County residents. The board's actions of 2019 and recommendations for 2020 are compiled in an annual report that can be accessed by viewing the county website under Advisory Boards. Some of the actions from 2019 to highlight include recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, including awarding an annual amount of $1,402,861 in funding to six local agencies for the homeless crisis response system, who request for proposals using funding that was from the consolidated homeless grant in 2163, local document recording fees, recommended to adopt the House Bill 1406, which retains a tax, state tax amount for local affordable housing, rent assist, and other services, recommend awarding $340,000 out of the local document recording fees for affordable housing and renovation and repairs to maintain affordable housing to the housing authority and in Keweenaw communities for the veteran tiny home village, and part of that 1.4 million supported the adult emergency shelter operated by Community Lifeline to be continuously open for seven months, which is the maximum allowed for special use permit. If you have any questions, please call our office at 360-427-9670, extension four.
Great. Thank you, Doc. All right, we're going to add something to the agenda. Item 4.3, and I'll read this if you don't mind. It is, "Our in acknowledgement of special trust and confidence in the integrity, diligence, and discretion of Kevin Frankenberger. I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do appoint and commission as a member of the Governor's Committee on Disability Issues and Employment for the term ending December 31, 2022, to hold the office with all rights, duties, and responsibilities legally pertaining to this position of public trust. In testimony whereof, I have set my hand and paused this, and caused the seal of the state to be affixed at Olympia this February 4, 2020."
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's pretty special. All right, now we're going to move on to item five. This is the time we set aside for the public, to give the public the opportunity to address the commission regarding items not on today's agenda. If you wish to address the commission, please raise your hand and the chair will recognize you. Please state your name and address before your comments. Yes?
Kevin.
Kevin, would you like to come forward?
Good with me, and thanks for reading that. I'm quite honored. What that means for us, and for me personally, and all of us, is that now I'm in the position to bring time, talent, and treasure from the state level, treasure, to Mason County to solve some of our issues. I'm delighted to have that position and be able to move some things along for us, I hope. To that end, we are hosting, we're hosting a town hall meeting, Mason County PUD number three, on February 27, 5:30 to 7:30. Well, we want our citizens to come and tell us issues and needs to improve the lives of sheltered residents who have disabilities. Keep in mind, us baby boomers and others are only temporarily abled, if you will. We're having knee replacements and we're using leg chairs and our, we're using magnifying glasses now and hearing aids and so on, so it's not just us visible with guide dogs. It's all of us need to come together and talk about what our needs are. Following that, the next morning, there'll be a few leadership breakfasts for elected leaders and others, so we could take what we hear at this town hall meeting and actually develop plans, A, B, C, one, two, three, wherein we can bring state-level time, talent, and treasure to Mason County to help solve some of those issues. For instance, we want issues, we want to hear about issues affecting people with disabilities or families and advocates. We need to hear about accessible housing, transportation, and school and work transition programs. We need to hear about employment opportunities, services for people with disabilities, and physical access to the built environment. And obviously, we want all's ideas for positive change, and then at the state level, we can come here and again, give that time, talent, and treasure I'm talking about to hopefully, 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 hopefully do better, move forward, and maybe be better ready for us, if you will, baby boomers. So again, spread the word, February 27, PUD on John Sperry Road, 5:30 to 7:30. Come y'all and let's talk.
Great. I'm looking forward to attending that. That'll be great. All right, do we have anyone else? Yes.
Morning, Mr. Steve Bloomfield, 391 Southeast Dominance Road in Shelton. I come to just, talk just a little bit briefly about the problem we've had with our business, our company. I say ours in that I am retired, but I still, in my heart, have a piece of the shellfish Our company was predicated on sales to China. We had all our eggs in one basket for 20-plus years, and recently, this mental, or this physical health virus has locked up China. We, our business as of the 15th of January was going to be one of the largest poundage sales months in the history of our company, and it went from thousands of pounds a day to hundreds of pounds a month. As a result of that, as of a few days ago, last Friday, we had to lay off over 50% of our workforce. And you might say, well, that's 40 people, but it's 40 people from Seattle Shellfish. Probably that from Taylor's, I don't know. I don't know how they're handling it. Maybe they're large enough to shift the personnel around and keep them employed, but I had a feeling they probably have the same problem. And then there's numerous other smaller companies, probably adds up to maybe 100 people in Mason County, directly impacted losing their jobs over this. What's their timeframe for fix? I don't know. We have no light at the end of that tunnel. When people stop getting sick, then we'll probably get the doors open back up to work. When you think of 100 people there, then you have to halo those out to the other sectors of the community they deal with. They're going to pull in, they're not going to go out to dinner, they're not going to be spending money down at the local establishments. It's going to impact your budget. You guys need to be fully aware of that, because it will, it will, it's not only us, it'll be the timber industry as well. They won't be unloading ships in China, because people aren't at the docks working. They're staying home. There's places you can go on the internet, and they'll show a downtown picture of Shanghai with, what, 20, 30 million people, and there won't be a person on the street. That is going to impact us severely. And we have to really think about that in our future dealings. Hopefully, the powers that be will come to the table and work out, and that's for the guys in the shellfish industry, to work out a better marketing strategy than all your eggs in one basket. Some of us are old, and we just don't understand. Something that I've been peddling for 20 years comes back to haunt us. But anyway, information, hopefully, some of the members of the community realize there could be severe economic hardships coming to Mason County. You won't be able to go to Fred Meyer and buy your can of Mandarin oranges, because they come from China. They won't be coming from China. Sooner or later, the Walmart, Dollar Store, you name it, this stuff's going to seize up. Maybe your tire's on your car. The price is going to go through the roof, because we don't make them here. It's going to be a problem. So, thank you for letting me, Doc. If there's any way that I can help, of course, I will. I'm, you said, I love Mason County, I love the people, I love my industry. I think we've tried to do right by people, and at times, it's tough, and it's going to be a lot tougher for those guys that are young and out of a job right now. That's what really hurts me. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, Steve, if you don't mind, just a couple of quick questions, maybe. Have there been any conversations in the states, you know, I know the agriculture under the Department of Agriculture, I mean, is there any conversations with the state for some relief or some indication of what state resources might come to bear to help your employees and to kind of buoy the industry as they kind of navigate this issue?
Well, I've had a brief conversation with commerce. Actually, under agriculture, we have very little. Agriculture, we've always kind of been a stepchild. Our authority gets split, the control, state control is Department of Health, Department of Agriculture, and Department of Ecology. We don't have one central focus, which puts us lower on the totem pole in any one of those agencies than most other places. It makes it tough, and it makes it cumbersome to work through. Do we expect financial relief or something? No, we don't. I think what we need is time, what we need is cooperation, and on a national scale, to get through this. That might be a tough thing to achieve right now, but we'll overcome that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Commissioners Tom Davidson. I appreciate your extending the comment period to accommodate me. I hope to earn it. Steve brings up a good point, and it kind of dovetails with who I wanted to speak with today. There's a symbiotic relationship between the businesses and the county and the public, and symbiotic means that it's a two-way, mutually beneficial relationship. That's the way businesses thrive in their host community. Sometimes that doesn't work as well and as smoothly as it should, and I speak today for the Scope Valley folks. I don't speak for them, and I don't live in Scope Valley, but I do recognize the benefits and the special considerations that this board, and other boards, have done for the, in this case, the Green Diamond Timber Resource Industry. I've been here, as you know, maybe 10, 11 years now, and I've watched special considerations always, in the form of proposals, always falling to favor the timber industry, sometimes, I don't think to the benefit of the public, at least with the considerations that I've seen happen in the Rural Development Code, to accommodate a good relationship with the industry. So, from time to time, we call on the industry to accommodate us, and I know it costs something, and I know they participate. I think Green Diamond donated $1 million, and I might have that wrong, but I think I understand, to the YMCA, and those are gifts. They fall in the realm of participation. But now we have a situation here where there are possibly lives at stake, where certainly it's a massive inconvenience, and in no other municipality that I can think of would it be tolerated, where people can, are allowed to leave their home for, in a 12-hour window when the conditions in emergency evacuation for floodings occurs, and not able to return. That's just unacceptable, when there's an alternative route available. So I would urge that we lean a little bit on this mutual symbiotic relationship that we have with Green Diamond, to the extent where they find a solution, or at least a little bit more cooperation, where people can come and go during these emergency services. We all know, we heard the man from Olympic Mountain Ice Cream, can't deliver his ice cream. That's a very, very local business. So I would hope that the negotiations would continue with them, and the evacuation route would be open for ingress and egress to and from the valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Carey, Belfair. Got four things, quick things, big projects, but they're not that hard in one sentence, they're just concepts. I saw that on your briefing agenda yesterday, you had a lot of notes, a lot of documentation going with the Belfair sewer, about the finances of it, about how to finance it, and the growth issues, you know, coming over the next years and what have you. Just short and sweet, with the Allen, you know, the North Bay Case Inlet Sewer System, I'd like to see the board at some point consider taking these connection fees and putting them into a reserve, so that down the road, when we do need to make capital facilities improvements to the treatment plant or what have you, that those funds are there, because I think over enough time, with the number of connections that have been happening over the last few years in Allen, it'll go a long way to help defer any rate changes or increases when you have to do, you know, capital improvements to plants. And, you know, there's enough happening that, you know, if you keep setting it aside, eventually, you'll have to increase that plant, and at least that would give you some funds, if, you know, not the majority over time, to address that. So, if the board could at least look at that, because I think it would help everybody, at least in the Allen Sewer System, to at least not let the rates go any higher. I mean, I know they'll go higher with time, but I'm saying, needlessly, if we could set aside money from connection fees and things like that, if we could set that aside for capital improvements down the road. That's one point. The other deals with documentation and the county trying to work through things as a citizen, what have you. On your system, where you have your resolutions and different things, I don't know if it's how you've numbered it, how you've numbered, but they're not in order, and you can't get them in order easily. Like, if you look at 2019, it's almost like, it's almost like because you use two digits, like you start at 01-dash-19, that's fine, but as soon as you roll into 100, then they get out of sync. And so when you're, especially if you're trying to look at things at the end of the year, like budgets and resolutions that pass near the end of the year, it's like, you have, it's a weird, it's sort of in a weird order. To me, it's like two ways. Either give it a three-digit number right off the bat, and it'll sort itself out, or give us the ability, you know, you have one, I think, command where you can sort different ways on it, just give us that over in the, you know, resolution number, because at least that would get it in order, so we can see what's happening much easier. The other thing, I've talked to Commissioner Netherland in the past, is that permit system is not user-friendly. You know, it has improvements over the other one, but as a taxpayer and a person that participates in law, community planning, what have you, it's hard to know what's going on in the county. It used to be easier to figure out what was really happening. Now there's these month-end reports, but it's not like the past. Not saying the past was perfect by any means, there was problems, but it's very hard to get a handle, like, you know, what's really happening in the county. And I know we have the data there, and, you know, like, I just want to see, you know, are we growing on the houses in this area or not? You know, that, just general big questions, not nitty-gritty, but it's very hard to tell that nowadays, with the system you got. And I understand what happened last spring, you know, through the getting new software, and then just another company buying another company, all those kind of things. All I'm saying is, we need to, as, you know, if you're going to use it, it seems like it'd be easier to use if you can get some of these things, so that people can look up things, and even as commissioners, if you want to know what's going on in the districts, you cannot easily see that anymore, so. And then, the last thing, on the, you know, on the financial reports, and I don't want to get in nitty-gritty, but in the past, it used to be you could look and see last years and this years, and it was hierarchically laid in, so you could look at it. Now the reports are what I call flat databases, meaning everything's just piled in the big report, and then all of a sudden, you switch to the sewers, you know, North Bay Sewer, and then you switch to, you know, Belfair, and it's all crammed together. You can't see easily the hierarchy of what, how things were, because like, you'll have like, three different telephone charges. One's the basic utility, the other is like, say, the deputy and the, you know, the directors of these different entities. So, it's just hard to, I mean, it's there, all the data's there, but it's like, the presentation is just like too flat. You can't tell where you are, where you've been, whereas at least in the past, even if we disagreed with what the numbers were, at least you could see that, you know, you're going this much further this year versus last year, or what have you, so. If some work could be done for that for, you know, 2021, I'm not asking to change the past, I'm just saying, going forward, let's make it easier for the citizens to, you know, at least, I mean, I'm not an accountant, but I hardly, if you've got a date a little laid out, you can at least kind of feel what's going on with your sewer system, or whatever, the sheriff's office, or whatever area you're interested in, so, thank you.
Nobody knows the numbers better than you do on the sewer for North Bay.
Right.
I've worked with them for a long time. Do you actually see it that there's capacity there to take this part and put it towards that reserve and not have the impact? As you know, we're using that money that we have now-
Yes.
-to do things like replacing, you know, some of the grinders and stuff that are going out-
Right.
...and the pump stations. Do you actually see that there is a capacity there to take the new construction?
I can't tell now. In the past, I could argue yes or no, but right now, I can't tell.
Because of that leveling issue?
Yeah. In other words, as an example, utilities at North Bay are like 80,000 in the budget for this year, but at, you know, Belfair, they're 70,000. Something doesn't seem right there, because just the size of the systems. You know, maybe it is, you know, maybe it works itself out, because you look at like waste salt, you know, the salts, that number looks proportional, like what's, you know, what's going on. But, and I realize, you know, when you have pumps and different things, they're not proportional necessarily to the number of users you have sometimes, but I'm not able, like a, was, you know, half a dozen years ago, to be able to see where we're going, and like, when we participated in meetings, we could at least argue, A, it looks like we're heavy on administrative, or, you know, what happened here on the insurance, because there was times when we were setting aside 40,000 and we only needed 20,000.
No, I remember those old numbers.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten down into it like I did back then.
I'm finding it difficult to look at it and just see where we are, and so to answer your question, I don't know. But even if, you know, 11,000 or whatever it is for the connection fee right now, if some, even if we couldn't do the whole thing, at least start the process, maybe 2,000 of that goes towards that. It doesn't seem like much, but it's one of those things that builds over time. So, but if, my push would always be, and you know, if you're number years on, is, I don't want to raise rates, but I don't want to have surprises later on, as, because as we get older, we don't have the capacity necessarily to handle, and our budget's those surprises. And so, one surprise is always if you can set connection fee money aside, so they can be used for capital improvements, then the users don't have to pay that, they can just still pay the, you know, the usage fee, and, you know, they'd be more hopefully powerful. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Doc. All right, we're going to move on to item six, adoption of today's agenda.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of today's agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, or adoption approved. Move on to item number seven, adoption, or approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the February 3, 2020 briefing minutes, January 14, January 21, and January 28, regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the February 3, 2020 briefing minutes, January 14, January 21, and January 28, 2020, regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And minutes are approved. We're going to move on to item number eight. This is approval of today's action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on the action agenda. Commissioners or members of the public can ask questions and/or have the items removed for a separate vote. Commissioner Netherland, if you could read items one and two. I will read items 8.3 and 8.4. And Commissioner Schutte, if you'll read 8.5 and 8.6.
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, item number 8.1 reads, approval to appoint Matt Jewett to the Mason Transit Authority Board to complete a vacated elected official term ending December 2021. Item number 8.2, approval of a service agreement with Stop Claims Corporation to provide workers' compensation claim management services for a monthly fee of $5,650 per month. Authorization to send professional claims intervention services, PCI notice to end Mason County's current contract.
Item 8.3, approval of warrants and treasurer electronic remittances. Claims clearing fund warrants number 8070158 through 8070308, in the amount of $277,927.99. Treasurer electronic remittances for January 2020, in the amount of $1,539,798.04. Item 8.4, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, March 3, 2020, at 9:15, to consider the rezone of several adjacent parcels from village commercial to multifamily medium-density residential within the Allen urban growth area.
Item 8.5, approval to set a hearing on Tuesday, March 17, 2020, at 9:15 a.m. for public comment on the surplus of parcel 42212-51-48008 as an intergovernmental exchange to the Port of Hootsport for use as a septic drain field for community restrooms. Item 8.6, approval to advertise a request for proposals for the Belfair urban growth area planned action environmental impact statement.
Okay, great. I haven't read through the action agendas, are there any items to be removed for a separate vote? No? Any items by the public to be removed for a separate vote? Yes.
Item 8.6.
Item 8.6. All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda, with the exception of item number 8.6, which will be removed for a separate vote.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda and remove item 8.6 for a separate action and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Now we'll move on to item 8.6, and ask staff to come forward to brief.
Good morning, Kel Rowan with Mason County Planning Department. This is, we have a request for proposals, we're going to send out, planning staff is requesting consultant services to assist us with drafting a environmental impacts, a planned action environmental impact statement for a portion of the Belfair urban growth area.
Okay. We have questions for staff? No questions?
No questions.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's, is anyone else here in that computer thing? You are?
Yeah, something.
Okay.
No. Okay, do we have any comments by the public?
Please.
Please state your name.
Sure.
Hi, Ken Van Buster. I live in Belfair, and I attended the briefing yesterday, and Kel graciously provided me with the new updated map, and it's my understanding that this 2004 plan- And it's my understanding that this 2004 plan, that the Belfair Subarea 2004 Plan will be updated as part of this process and that's, that's a good thing. It's long overdue. The project scope of work should, in my opinion, include the entire UGA. It's 2,400 acres, the entire UGA is. The latest map rendition, as best I can ascertain on the GIS system, is about 1,800 acres. That's two-thirds of the existing UGA. Any action you take on a portion of the UGA will have a direct effect on the others. And if I can, you know, you folks are looking at the map on a flat like this. If you look directly to the east of the Belfair UGA, that borders the Bramerton UGA, which isn't on, on your map. So in effect, the area that you've designated to be in EIS is everything up here on plateau and coming down the side. The area that's probably most affected is that portion down in the bottom where I live. That's why I'm asking that you consider the full UGA as a, something to be considered. And I think a reasonable consultant doing their due diligence is going to question why the entire UGA isn't being considered in the scope. And again, I would like to offer to serve on any review that you have for the consultants. So I, I really look forward to this process and I think it will be good for our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Do we have any further comment? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion or further discussion?
Madam Chair, just a, maybe a brief discussion based on the public comment we just heard. Maybe one thing we could consider is having it, having the map as we discussed yesterday in briefing and then having a bid alternative for the remainder of the UGA so that we can consider them as, depending on cost. I know the, the cost side of it, so that we can move forward with what we've decided in briefing yesterday, but also have an understanding of what the cost and timing would be on if we included the other portions of the UGA that we're leaving out.
Is it possible to do that with three alternatives? The original-
Yeah.
-that you brought forward, the second one, and then the third?
Yeah.
Then we'll give an idea, also time-wise, what it looks like? You know, there's different reasons for doing EISs. And one of the ones we're looking at is the possibility of being able to do permitting quickly up on areas that's going to be developed. That is one of the reasons for the EIS and one of the main reasons. And so I don't want to get away from that fact, that's-
And I, I, I agree with that. And that's, I think if we could see them on maybe parallel tracks and then decide. And I think in the way that, the way that staff has written the RFP, it states in there that it will be all or a portion of the UGA. So that there is flexibility in the language there so that, but if we can maybe find a way to ask the respondents to price out and time out, you know, the alternate, the remaining portions of the UGA, that might be a way for us to have a fuller picture and make a better decision.
I would like that. If possible, it would be nice to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
How much is it? What is it? So I'd like to see.
And I, you know, I would also add, I don't think there's anything that would prevent us from doing that on concurrent tracks, you know, in a phased way. You know, in order to capture the opportunity that we have with the initial boundaries that we came up with and kind of get after what you had, you had mentioned in terms of speeding up the process for permitting and that kind of thing. I don't think there would be anything that would prevent us from-
Maybe we can ask our staff to think.
Do you see any issue with that?
Just a staffing issue, so just our capacity, what we already have going on and-
Oh, no, we're still, we would, I'm, I'm still suggesting we have the consultants-
Yeah.
-do the work, just, just if they would-
What does it look like at the three stages?
Oh, yeah.
Price-wise, can we go out and time-wise, price-wise?
Yeah, I did write it to be flexible so we could look at all those alternatives of what works best for us.
Don't you make that?
Uh, yeah, so with that, Madam Chair, I move approval for item 8.6, approval to advertise a request for proposals for the Belfair Urban Growth Area Planned Action Environmental Impact Statement with three alternate proposals based on the maps that we have seen in briefings and the discussions that reflect the discussion we just had.
I'll second.
All right. All right, so, um-
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second for the approval to advertise a request for proposals for the Belfair Urban Growth Area Planned Action Environmental Impact Statement with three alternative, alternative proposals based on maps and briefing and what was the thing?
Uh, and that we discussed.
That we discussed.
Based on public comment.
Okay. That we discussed based on public comment. Do we have a, all in favor?
Aye.
I was going to just maybe have a brief discussion on that. So thanks to staff, this has been something that the commission has been interested in doing for some time. And appreciate staff's quick turnaround and flexibility as we thought through all the different parts of this. This is a, this will be a win for Belfair and North Mason. And it's in large part due to our staff's willingness to, to step up and get this done. And I'm excited to see the, the responses to this RFP.
This, this allows for competitive, for us to compete, is what it is. Just above the borderline on those maps, they have it. They already have it and that makes a difference when it comes to lending certain companies and bringing in certain jobs. We came close on, with a big, large company, very close. The difference between us was the EIS or no EIS. And we had, even had some of the infrastructure that was in better position. But it's important to be able to bring a company in and have them be able to get things done in a year, year and a half period.
Well, I, I would, I would agree with that. And I, this complements nicely the nearly $100 billion of investment that's going into Belfair-
Yeah.
-over the next few years between the freight corridor, Mason Transit, the improvements on State Route 3, potential sewer. And this really, this really moves us in a direction of putting development in Belfair where it belongs, where it's most appropriate in, in the UGA versus areas that have other critical natural features that should not be exposed to development. So this puts us, as Commissioner said, this puts us in a, in a better position to compete regionally for projects and for opportunities so that we can grow our economy and bring jobs to Mason County.
All right, okay. Echo your, your comments and look forward to employing more people, having the jobs here that can help our, our folks and keep them in Mason County. All right.
Especially after Steve Blumfield's presentation.
Looking at you, Steve. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Great. Move on to item number nine. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to stand up and give us a, share the comments or brief us? Seeing none. We will, we move on to item 10. We do not have any public hearing scheduled at this time, so we'll move on to item 11. Board reports and calendars. We'll ask Commissioner Netherton to go first, Commissioner Shute, and then myself.
Before I start, one, one personal privilege. Steve Blumfield, I want to thank you. You always think the big picture and you always bring it coming in, trying to think of all of us in this county. And you're an impressive man. I've served with you on many different things and I just wanted to say that and I hope you guys don't mind me taking that personal privilege.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. No, but, you know, the truth is, the stuff that's happening, I thought I was thinking on a global scale, but I haven't been thinking about some of the things you mentioned and we do have to prepare for that. But just the idea that you've come here to sober us up a little bit was appreciated. Sorry about that, guys. I attended a home rule meeting, which I found to be actually very interesting. There was some interesting things going on there. I was put off by the fact that he wrote the, the Growth Management Act, but worth some of that stuff. We all have our different things. We had our, our criminal justice meeting to look at some of the options and some of the statistics and stuff that going over to consider whether or not to go out for a new jail, whether to go out for a combined jail, what type of numbers are needed. I also attended the Wire 15 meeting, which was very colorful and active this time. Again, we have a situation where we have one member that is just determined to stop everything. And that's what happened again in this one. So we didn't get much done even after spending a lot of time there. Lynch Cove HOA meeting. We had briefings coming up this next week. I have EDC meeting, ORCA, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority. We're going to have another meeting in regards to the sewer. Enterprise introduction. I have a meeting of the ARC, EDC. Mosquito Fleet is having a big event for Valentine's Day. Just in case any of you guys are going, I'm going to be there. I don't usually do those things, but this time, my wife reminds me that I am married and I need to take her out of the kitchen. And so I'm going to do that this time.
Good for you.
That brings us back to briefings to start all over again.
Well, I think we just found the Journal's headline there.
Yeah. Randy does not take his wife on.
End quote.
Uh, just a few things. One, also was a, a part of the jail study meetings last week. Starting to get down to some brass tacks with, with potential partnership with Graves Harbor County and seeing what possibilities exist there. So the meetings will be picking up over the next couple of months. And hopefully by late spring, we'll have an idea of, of having a final report and recommendations on that. And very much anxious to get that report in and evaluate it. Going forward this week, I have MaceCom Board of Directors meeting, Grape Bend Center for Music Board of Directors meeting. Also be attending the Chamber After Hours event at Olympic College. Have RIA 14 meeting. Also have a meeting with Scott Burr from the Hookin' Out Coordinating Council. I'll be attending the TVW Gala. And I have a call, call with the Army Corps of Engineers on our Skokomish Valley projects. I had a chance last week to speak with Colonel Geraldi, who is the, who's the head of our region for the Army Corps. And just was able to, it was really a timely call with him. I usually deal with his, his staff, but it was a timely opportunity to talk to the colonel about some of the issues that folks are having out in the Skokomish Valley and how critical it is that we get these projects moving and, and get things up and running to help them out there as well. And then next week on the holiday, I'll be attending the Puget Sound Patriots meeting at the Hub in Belfair, where I'll be on a panel speaking.
Great, thank you.
So Thursday and Friday, I spent both days in Olympia. I'm always so happy to get back to Mason County, but there's a lot going up, going on at the Hill. Public Works wise and with a lot of, of other bills as well. So the, after this meeting, we'll have a Belfair Sewer briefing meeting. Tonight is the city council meeting here in Shelton and they will be picking the, a new member to serve on their council until they're, until they go up for election. So that'll be a very long meeting, they're saying, but it'll be worth it. Tomorrow morning, I have the planning meeting for emergency services at the Public Works. And then I'll be spending some time with Loretta, the director there with our new engineer. And then later that afternoon will be the enterprise meeting. And then immediately following that, I have a Timber Counties meeting. Thursday, I have DNR, a conference call regarding some litigation there. And then a Turning Point Board meeting. Friday is the LSC webinar. And then Monday is a holiday, so we will not have briefings. And then I will also be on the panel for the, at the Puget Sound Patriots meeting. All right. We've gone through all of that.
Just for laughs, uh, everybody can get a laugh out of it, although I just realized since we don't have briefings on Monday, I don't ever watch this, but my daughter happens to be a fan of John Cena and I am going to be attending a wrestling event. I don't, I don't know if that sounds hilarious, I just never, I'm going to be doing it with this WWE event that they're having so my daughter can see John Cena. Feel sorry for me, really, I'm serious.
I'm actually kind of jealous.
Yeah, are you really? You want to take her? It's not something I ever thought I'd be saying that I'd be going to.
All right. Having heard that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned.